Good evening. Welcome to the December tenth regular meeting of the Board of Education. I am so glad to see everyone here tonight. My name is Anupam Chigsidhu and really great to see all the kids here. I do want to say Superintendent Merritt had an emergency, family emergency to deal with, so she will not be here today, but her staff is here to assist and is ready to make sure that we have everything done for the agenda. So, I would like to have my board colleagues introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Lozaroats. Thank you for coming out.
Good evening, Patrick Kehoe. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Doug Brooks. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening. I'm Kate Borninski. Want to wish everyone happy holidays and see you after this meeting in the new year.
And Liz, would you like to introduce the staff?
Sure. Good evening and welcome. First, I'm Liz Vartanian-Gibbs and I'd like to begin by introducing Diane Robertson, the Executive Secretary, and we would like to thank her for taking minutes at the board meeting this evening. And of course, Charlie Jones, the man behind the scenes who captures these meetings on video so that those who cannot attend can view and listen to what takes place at this time. And at this time, the rest of Superintendent Merritt's core team can introduce themselves, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, and it's good to have the Smith Commits in the house tonight.
Hi, I'm W. P. Az. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services. Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening, Beth Rail, Chief Academic Officer. Thank you for coming this evening.
Good evening, Heather Fitzpatrick, President, Education Association.
Thank you. And would, could I get some of the Smith and East students to come help us with the Pledge of Allegiance? Come on forward, please. Come on up. Come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for those beautiful voices. All right, we are moving on to Part A, Adoption of the Agenda, so I'm looking for a motion for the adoption of the Agenda, approval of the Consent Agenda, Action Item Number twenty dash twelve dash twenty-four.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for adoption of the Agenda and approval of the Consent Agenda, Action Item twenty dash twelve dash twenty-four.
Support.
The motion was made by Member Lozarowicz, seconded by Member Kehoe.
Okay. This evening, the Consent Agenda consists of the Human Resources transaction. Since our last time together, we have a new hire for your consideration, as well as a leave and a retirement, and we are recommending a teacher for tenure. We also have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from November twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
And the board policies, our first read, did you want to go over those real quick?
Absolutely. So, the first read policies, we have Policy fifty-six-ten, Emergency Removal, Suspension and Expulsion. Policy fifty-six-ten-oh-one, Permanent Expulsion, which has been rescinded. Policy fifty-six-eleven, Due Process Rights.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, five-zero.
It is my pleasure right now to introduce everyone to Gretchen Clatterbuck. Come on up, Gretchen. I wasn't sure if you were already correcting math papers or yet, but welcome. Gretchen is our new math teacher at Plymouth High School, so congratulations, welcome. She comes to us from the University of Delaware with over twelve years of experience, and she will begin teaching math at Plymouth High School on January sixth. We're very happy you're here. Welcome. Congratulations. Welcome. Welcome, congratulations. Next, I would like to thank Jan Ranucci, who has been teaching in our district for over twenty years at East Middle School. She is a co-teacher with a general education teacher in mathematics, and she will be retiring at the end of the school year. At this time, I would like to recognize Jennifer Nunez, who is an art teacher at Bird Elementary School. She has completed five successful years of teaching in our district, so we are now recognizing her because she is receiving tenure. And here's what George Hill, the principal of Bird Elementary School, has said about Jennifer Nunez. Jennifer Nunez has taught art at Bird Elementary School since two thousand and fourteen. During that time, she has established herself as a dynamic presence among the teaching staff. She has an excellent rapport with her students and shows a sincere interest in them as individuals. As a teaching artist, she is constantly exploring new ways to deliver the art curriculum to enhance student learning. We are so happy to have her on staff facilitating a love of art for all of the Thunderbirds. It is my pleasure to recommend her for tenure with the Plymouth Canton Community School Districts. Congratulations, Jennifer Nunez, and thank you for your service to our school district.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to Part B, Celebrating Success. And tonight, we are honoring two parent volunteers from Tonda. Celebrating success, this evening, we'll honor two parents from Tonda, Julie Patterson and Corinne Stamatacos. Could you please come up? Did I say that right? Julie Patterson supports students by being at the school every day to lead the Tonda Daily News broadcast. She was also integral in supporting the design and implementation of the new hallway at Tonda and is helping to plan the future improvements of the school. Corinne Stamatacos takes the lead on many projects to support students at Tonda. She led the playground makeover, organized the purchase of new classroom signs inside the building, and Corinne has also supported the district in the past in a variety of ways, including serving the district's blue ribbon panel. Both of these women have been deeply committed to their school community, and we are very grateful for their time and energy that they have given to the Tonda family. Principal Dave Torrell, would you like to share a few words about why Julie and Corinne deserve this honor?
I can't say enough about our Tonda parent base to begin with. I'm slightly biased, but I think they're the best in the world. But I really can't say enough about these two women here. They are at our school nearly every single day. They're not getting paid for their time or their energy, but they are supporting us, supporting the staff, supporting the students, literally every single day, in ways that I can't even begin to count, and we are so incredibly grateful for everything that the two of you do. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present the following two community members, the Volunteer in Public Schools Award, also known as VIPS, for making a difference in PCCS students, families and staff. So, Julie Patterson?
Thank you.
And Corinne Stamatacos? Could you please go around?
Thank you, Freddie.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you, Corinne. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you so much.
Are you going to do the policy?
Can we move to the Policy Committee real quick while I go out there for a second?
At our last meeting, we, our last meeting was the last board meeting. Sorry, I'm doing this on the fly. Our next meeting is Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, at five-thirty in the Board, or the Superintendent's Conference Room. At our last meeting, we reviewed a number of policies. It's a great time, great committee to be in.
Can I add that the policies that we took action on tonight, those were due to changes in state law, mostly.
And so, I'll speak to the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We were scheduled to have a Finance and Operations meeting last Thursday, but we didn't have any topics to discuss, so that meeting was canceled. The next meeting that is scheduled is for Thursday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty, at four-thirty PM here in this room, and we welcome everybody to attend that. So, you're up, Presidents and...
Those were quick updates. First, I have the President's Report. Just a couple of things. I was invited to speak at the Stock Staff Meeting, which is the Staff and Teachers of Color, and I really enjoyed the progress and listening and hearing about Charlie Jones' history in this district of forty-four years. Just an amazing group of people, but I really admire Charlie more and more the more I get to know him. Again, the man behind the scenes who's doing all this great work. In addition to that, I want to mention that Aiden Morgan was here last time and invited the Board to the Comedy of Errors, and I had the opportunity to see the opening night, and it was amazing, and he was one of the stars of the show, so I encourage everyone to go see that. Really, really, really well done, and it's hilarious, so I just wanted to say kudos to Aiden and everyone else that put this great event on. Next up is the Student Performance and Achievement Committee. We met December fourth. We got an update for the New Business Academy, which was actually shared, we had an update here at the board meeting last week, or the last board meeting, so we just had a further conversation about that work, and we also got an update on the new Business Academy courses that are being introduced, as well as the CTE courses, along with some name changes. All of that is in the agenda today, so we'll talk more about that. And our next SPA meeting is Wednesday, January eighth, four-thirty PM right here, and I encourage everyone to join us. That is it for the Board Committees, from us. Next up is Educational Excellence Foundation.
My name is Mary Ann Foss. I'm here to represent the Educational Excellence Foundation again, but this will be my last time, as I'm leaving the Board at the end of January, February, and I'm really grateful for my time on the Foundation Board. It was a huge learning experience for me. I had received a couple of grants as a teacher, but never realized all the work that is done behind the scenes to raise the money for that kind of support, and I felt really great that I was able to do that kind of work once I left the district and retired and continued to support teachers within the district. The EEF has paired with the, well, along with the Plymouth Community United Way Fund, has now embarked on the community giving campaign for the employees of the district. We ask each year and hope that we can get a dollar per paycheck for ten pays from each employee. That's every year our goal. That would go a long way towards helping us support our classroom grants. This past fall, just recently, we awarded over twenty-four thousand dollars to Plymouth classrooms. We received more than thirty-five thousand dollars requests. It was the largest request we'd ever received, but we were unable to fund all of those, so the more donations we get, the better we can do in helping those students with that. Again, I'd like to thank all of you for your support for the educational foundation. I think that they're a silent partner in this district, and they often fly under the radar, but I think that they do a lot of good in promoting the district as well. I hope all of you enjoy the holidays coming up, and I hope all of you get some well-deserved rest and relaxation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the School Improvement Highlights from Smith Elementary School.
Yep, and it's my pleasure to introduce Maureen Malloy, Director of Elementary Education, who will introduce our Smith friends.
Good evening. Tonight, you're in for a treat. As you can see, we have a large group of individuals from Smith Elementary who are going to share with you all of wonderful things happening at Smith Elementary. So, Mrs. Rodell, if you would get us started.
I would love to. First of all, thank you so much for allowing us to come and present all the great things that are really happening at Smith Elementary, because it's fun to share and it's fun to allow them to share all the great things that they're doing. I want to take an opportunity first to introduce all of our students and our staff members who helped create this presentation. We've been practicing and we've put a lot of work into it, and we're really excited about it. So, let's start with Mr. Stamper. Eric Stamper is a kindergarten teacher for us. He leads our student data team through our lighthouse, student lighthouse. Ms. Suzie Zarati is another kindergarten teacher for us, and she does a lot with our staff lighthouse team, and she organizes our leadership event for the Leader in Me every year. And then, of course, our students. So, if you could stand when I call your name. Cash, can you start us off? Oh, yeah, sorry. So, I don't stand still very well. So, Cash is going to start us off, and then we have Audrey. Thanks for standing, Audrey. And then Emily, and Sydney, and Mags. And in the back, we have Natalie, and then we have Blake. So, thank you for coming out, and thank you to the families for bringing them, because I know, especially one family, it's their anniversary, and they're bringing their child here to help us talk about Smith Elementary, so we're very grateful to that. Let's see if this is going to work. Beautiful. So, at Smith Elementary, our mission is everyone leading, everyone, or everyone, sorry, everyone learning, everyone leading. We are a Leader in Me school, and we are a lighthouse status school. You're going to learn a lot more about that, because it plays into our student, or our school improvement goals, but we consider ourselves, as a lighthouse school, we consider ourselves a professional Leader in Me school, and we're going to tell you more about that in a few minutes. But our school improvement goals are focused around reading, science, and then our cultural proficiency, which ties into our Leader in Me. To get us started, Mr. Stamper and Ms. Zarati are going to tell you a little bit about the lighthouse and Leader in Me.
Thanks for having us here. So, a big piece to our school improvement plan is the Leader in Me. The Leader in Me is a character education program that's evidence-based, and what they do is they build off and work off of something called the Seven Habits, and that's based on the work of Stephen Covey, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. We chose this program seven years ago at Smith because of its success, evidence-based success, as well as its ability to empower students, and we know that empowerment in students leads to students taking ownership of their own learning, so investing in themselves, and not just their academic ownership, but their overall ownership of themselves, their social and emotional development as well. And you know, when you give students the opportunity to take ownership, it can be messy at times, right? They can make mistakes, and you support them, and they learn from those mistakes and build from that. But that opportunity is so important, because what it does, it widens their perspective. It leads into something called empathy, and empathy, numerous studies have shown that empathy is linked, at least in the immediate future, to reading and math scores going up. And in the long run, empathy is also linked to higher rates of happiness. So, that's kind of what we're after, right? So, we have the student lighthouse team today, here, the data team from the student lighthouse team. They're going to be sharing some more pieces with you about that, and what we're trying to do is just help you understand, kind of walk a mile in the students' shoes at Smith. So, we know the definition of empathy is just having the ability to understand how somebody is feeling, but when put into practice, really, it's more grasping the many sides of today's complex problems and then collaborating with people around you to work towards solving those problems.
Our year begins in August, when our teachers and support staff collaborate together to create a year-long plan that supports the seven habits in our district curriculum. Our theme this year is Choosing Kindness. We kick off our school year with a school-wide mission statement parade. Every class presents their classroom mission statements, and then we continue each month to have school-wide assemblies that are called Galaxy Gatherings. Our student lighthouse team and data team are our leaders during the assemblies. Each month, we focus on a habit, and we share out on our school-wide WIGs, which are wildly important goals, and we update our students and staff members with our, about our student service learning projects. All students have a leadership notebooks, which they track their academic and personal goals, as well as our school goals, and a section for celebrations. We hold a leadership event every year that provides students and staff an opportunity to showcase our successes throughout the year. In June, our fourth and fifth grade students lead a leadership job fair for our third and fourth grade students. Our third and fourth grade students go to the job fair and learn about our student leadership jobs that they can apply for. In the fall, we have a team of teachers that select the students for each position. A little fun fact for you, there are over a hundred and sixty schools in Michigan going through the Leader in Me process, and there's thirty-one lighthouse schools. Smith Elementary is proud to be one of the lighthouse schools.
So, we're getting to the fun part now, because the data team is going to go up and start speaking. But first, I just wanted to say thank you again on behalf of the data team for allowing us to speak. I think this can widen their perspective, helps them connect with their community, but also helps them kind of understand the workings of schools, the school system. I think that's important for them to grasp and widen their perspective. As Ms. Zarati said, we hold a job fair in the spring each year, and the students get to apply for jobs. So, this year, we had seven students joining our data team, and five of which are here with us today, so you've met them already, and they're going to speak in just a little bit. Two had other commitments, they couldn't make it, and we might consider firing them, maybe, for not being here. I don't know. No, of course we wouldn't do it. So, Sarah and Harper are also on the data team, and they couldn't make it today, but they bring a wealth of knowledge and different viewpoints to our data team, so they are wonderful. So, we ready? Audrey, before we get started, though, with the data team's presentation, Audrey's can go up and share a couple of things with you.
So, we understand you've had a really long day at work and probably haven't had a chance to eat, so we have a treat for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the cookie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sweetheart. You're beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got one. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Feel free to eat your cookies right now or save them for later.
I'm eating mine right now. This is dinner.
We help our schools set goals by we find problems and we make the goal to help fix it. We track our data by seeing who's following it and if it's causing more problems. We share our data on our announcements and in Galaxy Gatherings. Our Galaxy Gatherings are giant assemblies of everyone.
We are a very small but important piece of the Leader in Me at our school. We are like the centerpiece of a puzzle, small but important. We help our staff with ideas to make our school better.
So, now, we'll go through some slides of the data team sort of in action to give you an idea of what it's like, and these are past projects that we're going to share with you, just to give you an idea of how we're incorporating ownership of their learning, how we're widening their perspective, and including empathy in everything that the students are doing.
We have done some school-wide goals. We call these goals WIGs, and that stands for wildly important goals. One of them was to keep our hallways clean. We showed the school what the hallways looked like and what they should look like. We also taught the school how to keep their halls clean and what a plus and a delta would be, and that is how we tracked our data. We tracked the data twice a day and shared on Monday morning announcements and aboard the hallway. We also shared it at Galaxy Gatherings. A plus would be when halls have nothing on the floor and lockers are closed. A delta is when lockers would be open and there's stuff on the floor. We went to different classrooms to remind them what to do, and that was our favorite part and was so much fun.
Another school-wide goal is that we found our lunchroom was too loud, so we came up with the Yakker Tracker. After five weeks, the Yakker Tracker did help with our voices, but it caused a little bit of problems, so we came up with a better idea, and it kind of works now.
Every year, we collect Halloween candy and give it to the troops. This is a big empathy builder, because we are giving something we love and giving it to somebody who needs something to cheer up their day. We set school-wide goals, and also we set class goals. We go to every classroom and weigh the candy, and then we record it down on a sheet of paper. We also share with the students at Smith that it's okay if you don't hit your goal, like this year, we had a goal of seven hundred pounds of candy, but due to bad weather on trick-or-treating day, we only got six hundred fifty-two pounds of candy.
Recently, we noticed a problem with lunch choice switching. The kids said that they wanted one thing, but when they went to order, they said that they wanted another option. This caused kids to not get the order that they wanted. The data team worked with the lunch staff to create new order slips. We told the school to always be honest with their lunch choices so that every student could get the order that they wanted. Before sharing our problem with the school, we had an average of twelve lunch mistakes per day, which meant that twelve kids didn't get the order that they wanted. After sharing with the school, we only had an average of twelve, of five mistakes per
Now, we will share some district-wide goals. A few years ago, we did Hands for Hurricanes. Smith chose to collect masks for people cleaning up the hurricane, and we set a goal of two thousand. We collected four thousand eight hundred fifty instead. We taught the school about empathy and why it is a good trait to have.
Another district-wide goal is Change for Autism. Autism affects many friends here at Smith. Sorry. We shared some videos and had, and we also did some activities so kids could have empathy for others. April is a National Awareness Month, so we raised some money, we raised lots of money. To be exact, we raised one thousand five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and that's the most out of all the schools in our district who participated.
This is our first Spirit Week fundraiser. We did where we bring one dollar and we get to wear a hat, and we used all that money to donate treats to the police officers and firefighters. It helps connect us commists with the community, and it helps build empathy in us, and it also lets us give back.
Fourteen-year-old Emily McCullough started a project called Hope Blankets. This is a project where she makes blankets for sick children at Mott Children's Hospital. She asked us, Smith Commits, if we wanted to help make blankets for the sick children. Of course, we said yes, to give back, strengthen empathy and change perspective. While making the blankets, some students asked if they could make a blanket for a kid on their hockey team that had special needs.
Now, let me tell you about some of the history of the data team. It started out with two first-grade boys in Mr. Stamper's class who loved math, so Ms. Jones, the principal at the time, sent them on projects to collect data for the It wasn't until the fourth year of the data team that a girl named Addie joined, so in March Women's History Month, we acknowledged her in front of the school as the first girl on the data team, along with Hillary Clinton, Donna K. Patrick, Amelia Earhart and Sally Ride. Since then, our data team has been a mix
Since then, our data team has been a mix of boys and girls because we like to have different perspectives on how we think.
This year, during Parent Teacher Conference Week, we had two grade levels implement student-led conferences. Each student highlighted a behavior, reading, and math goal, along with some fun facts about their learning. So today, we have Blake and Natalie. Come on up. They participated in the student-led conferences. They shared with their families. And today, I'm gonna ask them a few questions about their experience. So Blake is a 3rd grader in Mrs. Schroeder's class. Blake, how did you plan out your student-led conferences?
I brainstormed my goals and made a plan so I could achieve my goals this year.
How did you set your goals?
I thought about areas where I could improve. One of my goals is to work on my multiplication facts. I'll achieve this goal by practicing every night by using flashcards. I'll use extra math in class at and at home.
What was your favorite part of student-led conferences?
My favorite part was when we discussed my behavior and when my mom said she was proud of me.
Thank you. And I have Natalie here, she's in Mrs. Zinser's 3rd grade classroom. Natalie, talk about how you planned out your slides and what you are focusing on this year.
I planned out my slides step-by-step, and I really thought about what would challenge me. And I like doing them a lot. I was mostly focused on my reading and math goals.
Great. How will you achieve your goals? And can you give us an example of one of your academic goals?
I'll achieve my goals by practicing every day on extra math at school and read 20 minutes per day.
Awesome. What was your favorite part of student-led conferences?
Doing it in front of our families and seeing the look on their faces.
Thanks for sharing out and starting a new tradition at Smith. This was an example of our 4th grade student-led conferences. They had, they highlighted a glow, which was a strength, and then a grow, something that they needed to work on. And then they also included a strategy that they can make their goal attainable. So as I mentioned before, all Smith students have leadership notebooks. They may look different in kindergarten than they do in 5th grade, but all students track academic goals and personal goals. The notebooks hold our students accountable for their learning. In their notebooks, they have their school, classroom, and personal mission statements, leadership roles that they have held throughout the year, and celebrations like meeting a multiplication goal or a Leader of the Month award. In May, we invite our families to our learning celebration. Students have the opportunity to share their notebooks with their families, and their families get to see all of the growth that they have made. Students also share their leadership notebooks at our annual leadership event, and we hope to see many of you there this spring. One of our school-wide goals, last year, when the district implemented a new reading assessment tool for elementary teachers, we wanted to incorporate that in our school-wide goal. We are using the Benchmark Assessment System, and we are testing our students three times a year to see what their reading level is. All students will become proficient readers, and this is linked to our Student Improvement Goal. Our goal in 2018, 2019 was 80% of all students will be reading at or above grade level or will make one year's growth in reading. Teachers use the Benchmark Assessment System to track their students' reading levels. They also use progress monitoring in their classrooms, along with other district curriculum. All students track their progress throughout the school year in their leadership notebooks. In fall of 2018, 55% of students were reading at or above grade level. In May 2019, 88.8% of our students were reading at or above grade level or made one year's growth in reading. This year, we are continuing to track our reading levels using the Benchmark Assessment System. Our goal this year is 85% of students will be reading at or above grade level. When we tested in the fall, we were at 69% of our students that are currently reading at or above grade level. We will administer the BAS test in January for all Smith students.
I get the pleasure of talking about our families at Smith Elementary. So we work very hard at connecting our families with the school, providing opportunities to inform parents not only on the events that are happening at the school, but progress that their students are making. We'd like to try to create opportunities for them to connect, not only with us as educators, but with each other as parents as well, to help to build that strong community at Smith Elementary. So, as you can see, we do weekly newsletters. We do a weekly robo-call. The analytics for our newsletter is down in the lower right-hand corner. We reach parents all over the country. And that changes every week, and it's really fun to kind of watch where all of our parents are and that they're staying connected to their children's education. I think that's the most critical part. We do movie nights, we have one this Friday if anyone would like to come. It's an experience. I look forward to them.
What's a movie?
What's that?
What's a movie?
This, Santa Buddies. Santa Buddies, and we sit on the gym floor, so bring something comfy. We, using our survey that Mr. Brandon facilitates for us every year, we found that our parents are really quite pleased with our teachers and the work that our teachers are doing. This first slide connects directly to students, whether they're challenged and whether or not we are differentiating instruction and are we meeting the needs academically of our students. And as you can see from the green, which indicates strongly agree or agree, our parents are very pleased with the work that we are doing based on the survey. The next talks about how well are we informing our parents of how students are doing? And are our teachers developing those relationships with our students? And our parents seem to strongly agree and agree with that as well.
I'll take this one, because it's not always easy to brag about yourself, so...
I prefer to leave myself.
No, it's important to have in there, right? So apparent, the survey also talks about the administration, right? So Ms. Rodell was assessed basically in four areas there: being available, being courteous, being responsive, and being visible. And, I mean, she's knocking out of the park, look at that green in all of them. So we're so lucky that parents, the Smith staff, the families in our community are so lucky to have such a smart and adaptable leader like Ms. Rodell at our building.
We'll move on from that. All right, back to our families. So we are blessed, as are all of our elementaries in Plymouth Canton Community Schools. I might have to challenge Dave Turle on his are the best. I really think mine are the best. But we can agree to disagree. Our Smith PFO does so many great things for our building. You know, we run a couple of pretty big fundraisers every year, but they utilize that money to support our students with drinking fountains, sensory paths, a walking path, which was a huge investment a few years ago, our garden clubs, benches. And not only do they buy things for our school, they create events and activities for our students to not only connect with the school, but to connect with each other and for our families to connect, such as the movie nights, our fun run, where Mrs. Hattie, our amazing school secretary, and I dressed up as chickens and did the chicken dance because we raised enough money. And so many more fun, fun activities. So we're very grateful and very fortunate to have the families that we have at Smith Elementary. Our educators are really the heart and soul, and we even have some who came just to support us today. So thank you, Smith teachers. They are really the heart and soul of this building. They put everything they have into our students, the dedication to learning and teaching and developing relationships. Currently, we are working on, district-wide and in our building, on implementing restorative practices and training all of our teachers. That has been a huge hit with our teachers. They come back from the trainings fired up. They're implementing the strategies right away, building those relationships, doing those restorative circles. It really has been a powerful change and implementation in our building. So we appreciate your support on all of that. Our teachers are implementing words their way. This is the first year for that. We continue to implement our workshop models in reading and writing. We are looking at our MTSS. We're evaluating our MTSS protocol in our building so that we can connect it to the district-wide objectives, our three strategic objectives. We're also doing a year-long book study of The Energy Bus by John Gordon, which really focuses on positive energy, positivity, positive mindset, and how it can help to enhance and enrich not only our lives, but the lives of our children and our families. And of course, we continue with the leader in me. So, looking forward, and beginning with the end in mind, our mission of everyone learning, everyone leading. We want to continue to build those relationships within our restorative practices, not only with staff to students, but staff to staff, staff to families, and then building that community with the outside community as well, and really connecting everyone together. We want to continue to live those seven habits, continue to set those academic goals, celebrate our successes, and implement our curriculum with fidelity. We are hoping to, in planning, to extend our student-led conferences throughout the entire building, K5. We have two grade levels jump on board this year, and we hope to continue to expand that. So again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and I certainly want to thank all of our Smith commists for coming. So huge round of applause for all of you. Great job. Are there any questions that we can answer for you? Colleagues, questions?
Just a comment?
Yes.
I just want to say that this is so exciting to hear about all these things. And what I hear is sort of the theme throughout is relationships, and I think that's fabulous.
Me too. Couldn't agree more. Remember Kehoe?
Yeah, I usually have a comment and questions, and this is just a fabulous presentation. And I really appreciate how you guys collaborated amongst all the different people and how you brought the kids into the process. It was just a great presentation.
They're the best part of our jobs.
No questions for me.
Thank you.
I think you guys did really well. Thank you so much for bringing the students in and having them speak. I really enjoyed it. You guys did great.
I have a question. Yes? How long have you been a leader in me school?
Seven years.
Okay.
Seven years.
And this is a wondering, more for Beth. I know we've talked about it in other board settings in terms of how leader-in-me schools are... There's certain elementary schools that are leader-in-me schools within Plymouth Canton. And one of the things, this is just a wondering, at a larger scale, knowing the success, and I'm looking at the kids and how fabulous they did. You take ownership of your learning. You are part of the change process. And when things don't work, you are looking at solutions collectively, and I love that. You are teaching them lifelong skills that will carry with them forever. So I wonder how we can expand this, and is it worth looking at to expand it to other elementaries? Okay. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. And that is our driving force, is that ownership. Because it is amazing to watch students take on that ownership and the drive that they have once they take that ownership. It's so fun.
Thank you, and thank you for the cookies. We really appreciate it. Thank you for everything.
And the rest are for them, so...
Oh, yay. Wow, it's hard to beat that. Next up is citizens' comments, and I have one from Aiden Morgan. Coming up, you'll have three minutes.
I don't have any cookies.
I'll share mine with you.
So as Madam President mentioned, this past weekend, we put on Shakespeare's The Comedy of Errors, which went fantastically. I was super proud of all the work that everyone put into it. And I would like to invite all of you sitting here, as well as you in the audience and those of you watching at home. I encourage you to come see it, I invite you. It is a wonderful show, very fun. I play one of the leads, who is Antiphilus of Ephesus, the brother of Antiphilus of Syracuse, who gets lost at birth and they spend their time trying to find each other and getting, people getting confused over which is which. And it's a load of fun. You're bound to enjoy it if you come, which I highly encourage all of you to do. That was the only thing I had meant to talk to you, the board, about. The rest was to talk to the people at home, since there is a lot of teachers, parents, and just people in the community that listen. Since you voted for the bond to go through, that was your part, and now it is their turn. So I am encouraging all of them to talk with your friends, talk with everyone about, get the word out that we need this bond. The thing that I am advocating for is the theater. We are gutting and remodeling the Gloria Logan Performing Arts Auditorium at Salem High School. And it is very important to us all that it goes through because we have not had theater benefited much at all in the 50 years that it's been around. So that is why I am here. I deeply, deeply care about this. I would not be here if it wasn't important to me. My good friend Dalton Barthold last year wouldn't have stood before you all, as I am now, if he didn't also feel that it was important. It is, I keep saying it's important because it is. There's no other way to describe it. This is crucial to us continuing to thrive and survive as a member of the community. So I encourage you all to think about it, to talk with others, to just get the word out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is administrative reports, and we have, starting with Finance and Operations, Debbie.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to discuss our key performance indicators, or KPIs, as they're known. They're used to measure key areas that are agreed upon between both our internal staff and GRBS, our custodial services provider, to determine how well we are doing and/or areas that need attention. The quality reviews are done weekly in the early morning before school begins, and sometimes daily to maintain our continuous process improvement. Through our feedback that we obtain through work order system, through physical and personal observations, through quality reviews, and through the K-12 insight reports and surveys, we jointly put together this quarterly report. Jason Donsis is here, Vice President of GRBS, and he'll take us through the data and the areas of concern in our strategic action plan to address those items. And Rich Welsh, our Operations Manager, will assist when needed. So Jason, take it away.
All right, thank you for having me again. No clicker. Thank you, Nick. And I did not miss the dash in the PCCS. I have to change the whole template, it'll be better next time, I promise. So, the KPI for this quarter, the fall quarter of 2019, just a couple of highlights that we'll hit here to begin with. This, of course, is going to compare the last three quarters that we do these particular measurements so that we can look at progress overall. This is the quarter that admittedly is normal for it to be the best because we are coming right off of summer. We have a smaller amount of indoor activities by comparison to the rest of the school year. And so it's natural to see, like, your initial September expression data points are much higher. So if we take a look at the slide, first slide here, just as a review, what we're looking at is anything that is in that 10% margin is what we want to pay focus to, to make sure that we are keeping that on track. Anything over 20% is considered a major concern. The good news is, and we'll share the specifics as we get there, so this year, as compared to last, when it comes to staffing, if you recall, when we kind of came out of the spring term last year, really struggling with the manpower situation, that impacted the quality and consistency pretty significantly. We put a plan into place that involved some modifications to the staffing setup, using more full-time FTE versus part-time, increased wages. And we did all this at no cost to the district, and it has made an impact. So I'll share those specifics. But we did start more quickly this year with a good staff. We've averaged about 95.5% staffed, but we also have a subpool. So currently, we have eight people, for example, that are in our subpool. These folks typically have some very specific needs in terms of when they can work and how often they can work, which is why they're not in regular spots, but it does help us to fill some of those gaps. We did pull in all of the leads of all the buildings. We had sort of a three-day training seminar with them all where we reviewed all of the processes and... where we reviewed all of the processes and the procedures, and we went through all the equipment, and we'll talk about that. As well as, we worked collaboratively to review all the job descriptions, make sure they met the needs specifically of the buildings. We put them all in binders, distributed them out to the buildings to make sure everyone had them. And we're currently also working collaboratively with some representatives from the union to talk about some communications and expectations clarifications. So that's what we've been up to. So staffing, obviously, is the topic of the day for everyone. Some significant things to note here, so you can kind of see the last three years as compared to where we're at in this first quarter. Last year tells a big story. As you can see, we were hiring at a significantly lower rate than we were losing people, which directly related to some of the issues we were having. This fall, with the changes we made as part of that strategic action plan, you can see that we hired significantly more than we lost. So we're back, you can see the previous two years, we were more higher incoming than outgoing. We are actually in very good shape in that aspect this year. We are able to hire like crazy. Now the challenge begins getting them trained. So the pictures you see there are just a couple of quick excerpts of our training seminar. We held it at Salem. Spent three days, like I said, going through these different processes and systems with all of the building leads and new staff. And that will become now sort of a regular recurring thing we do, because we do understand that there is a turnover element to what we do. This regular cycle of this quarterly training is going to be a normal behavior path. So we've already got a schedule of some similar-type trainings that are going to happen here as we head into break to refresh those folks that maybe didn't get this initial training push. We also have two full-time trainers in the area that participate in supporting this process. So if we look at the scores, again, so you'll note there are some boxes that don't have data from the fall and winter. This is, as a reminder, a result of we changed the inspection tool to kind of better adapt it to the buildings, hit some more specific areas that we wanted to measure. So this is our second round with that new tool, and so we are able to compare where we're at this fall compared to spring. Good news is, there is much improvement across the board, but we still do have some specific areas that need to be addressed. As you can see, in this case, with our entrances, a lot of focus being on the floors to really improve those scores. However, we need to not let things like the sills and ledges, dust and cobwebs get away from us. Offices and media centers, again, as a reminder, this is a shared space with plant engineers cleaning this space in the elementary schools and GRBS staff cleaning these spaces in the secondary schools. So all the data is in there from both. And this has generally been a good area for us. Again, focus being on floors, vacuuming, and so forth, where those areas have improved. Things like the vents and the lights in both of those areas. There are smaller point scales, so anytime you mark it down, it does immediately make an impact, but we are working with our teams to make sure they remember to look up. Classroom piece is obviously the biggest point of focus for us, specifically, again, as it relates to the floors. Really, we've kind of prioritized with the floors being the number-one most important thing district-wide that we really are focusing on. We're hovering right in that 10%, so there's still work to do, but still feeling that there is general district-wide improvement in that area. Meanwhile, we didn't see the improvement we wanted to see in things like vents, and we, in that focus on the floors, and we've worked collaboratively with Tim and Rich to kind of look at some of the root causes of why the floors take as long as they do to clean. A lot of times, what gets passed up then with that focus on the floors is you see that we're slipping a bit in our detail work, sills, dusting. And then sinks and counters have been a focal point, especially in elementary schools. That was a data point that wasn't measured before. We've now started to measure it, and we need to see some continued improvement there. Cafe, kitchen, athletics, this is a whole category that we didn't measure before. So second round through as compared to spring. Again, we do see some improvement. The biggest thing that we need to work with our folks on is the cafeteria table piece. That is where, or I'm sorry, the cafeteria lights and vents again, and then the gym floors and bleachers. Those are an area that, we've seen some improvement, but we're not quite where we need to be. And then finally, quarters and stairwells. Again, it's not surprising that these scores are higher, particularly as you look at the September and October data points are coming right off of summer. They've just been all cleaned and waxed. So our folks have done a good job. We'll get a better view of long-term results, really, in this next quarter. This quarter admittedly is a bit skewed in this particular category. And then restrooms. So restrooms that I'll speak to, one of the things that we've been working on as we've continued to work through these categories, we do see improvement. We are battling a little bit of what we would call the battle against the age and the sort of just structural condition of some of the bathrooms. I know there's the bond piece that's going out. So we're looking at what different processes and chemistry that we can use to battle things like odors, to battle things like streaky floors, streaky walls. And so we're hoping that collaboratively, if we look forward to upgrades and remodels, that will help the cause as well. But in the meantime, our main focus continues to be now fixtures, which we are measuring, because that's an important piece. So we have seen improvement there with some work to go, as well as the floors and walls, which we still are right on that line where we feel comfortable, but we need to continue to push and get better. So overall, district-wide, again, classrooms continues to be a main focus. Improvement, which is good, but we need to continue to get our folks to just stay consistent with that. That is the focal point of that training exercise that we're doing every quarter, is just a reminder of those processes through the classrooms. So one of the pieces of data we've started to include now is what was the highest and lowest building in each of the categories. As you can see, when it relates to the park, Salem continues to be our spot where we're really trying to get that routine settled and get the results we need. There's some project work we're going to do there over the winter that will give that a boost as well. The middle schools, actually, in general, have been fairly good. This, so you'll see West listed as low. A lot of those low scores at West are in the kind of the low 90s. We felt good about the team at West so far this year, and the other buildings have been better yet. So the middle school piece, we felt good about. The place where we still have some teams to really work on and get settled is the elementary piece, particularly as it relates to Farrand and Erickson and Workman. And I'll speak a little bit to what we've done at Workman here coming up. But you'll also see, when we look at the work order piece, that they are representative of about a half dozen of the elementary schools, and then the rest have been either very minimal or no work orders for this quarter. So we're really zeroing in on those key buildings to find solutions. So again, here's the work order report. This was the fall piece. What you can see right away is the usage continues to really rise, the park being the most frequent users. One of the pieces that we're working on with this communication piece is how do we avoid multiple work orders for the same issue? So if there was a problem, say, in the north stairwell, a lot of times you'll see is we'll get three or four people that will report that, which is good. But then the question is, is how do we tabulate that? Do we count it as one? Is it still counted as four? We just keep all of them currently so that we can monitor the usage and what's being reported. One of the deficiencies that I'll note is when we look at the work order piece, it doesn't seem significant in the big pie of all of the communication, but we've seen an uptick in concerns about kitchen floors. And that doesn't align with some of our inspection data, so we're looking into why that is. Are we not catching something? Is there an expectation that's off-base? We've been working with Kristen and her team to address that issue and get on top of it. Our wow reporting, there's some encouraging things here. The biggest takeaway out of that is last year, when we finished the school year, we had 108 wow's submitted. So these are when people send a compliment or a hey, nice job, or this person's really great. 108 for the whole school year. So so far, this quarter alone, we've received 55. So we're much ahead of pace. People are communicating the good, which is good. So as a recap, again, second full round on the new grading scale. I talked about the areas that we need to continue to focus on and the kitchen floor piece that we're looking into. We did look at Workman in particular, because that was a much heavier issue this year than it's been in the past. Looking at the flow of the building, the timing of the building, the student count of the building, we have modified that staffing to treat it more like a middle school, added a mid-shift person there that can help the PE with lunch coverage and cleanup, as well as more time to work in that building. That's an issue in a few different buildings. We're really running out of spaces. So things that used to be a storage room now become a resource room and things like that. And it's good that we have something like School Dude, because a lot of times we'll get reports of, hey, they keep missing my space. And then we'll find out like, oh, I didn't really even know you were there. I'm sorry. So the, sort of the sprawl in a lot of the buildings is really getting to a place where there's really no more room, and we're cleaning every inch of it. So. So our big piece is to focus on retention. We really want to make sure that we are providing that consistent service and care for the buildings. And so the hiring part, as I mentioned, is going really well. I can bring people in. Now we're really focused on retention. We have a lot of programs we've rolled out that I've shared sort of privately with the team, because they are our special sauce. I don't want anyone else to do it. But they're very cool programs. They are working. It's helping. And so we're going to continue to push in that direction, as well as look at the park in particular to see if there's a different way to structure it, if there's a different leadership model, what can help kind of give that space a boost with the complications and the busyness and all of that that it brings to the table. So that's what we are working on for this quarter. Yes, so one of the things we are also working on with the union reps, thank you. So School Dude as a tool is great for us in operations, because we're very familiar with using it. It's a not-familiar platform for a lot of the teachers. And so what they are familiar with is Google Docs. So we are collaboratively working with the team to come and how do we have the same level of communication and be able to track the same data, but use a platform they're much more familiar with? So we're testing side by side. We're not doing anything with School Dude yet, but we're testing a model side by side in a couple of buildings to see if that will help with communication and dialogue and exchange of information by using a Google Doc format. And so I know that the teachers are pretty excited about that, because that's, I'm married to a first-grade teacher, and that's, she uses that for everything. So I know she's comfortable with that. So that's one of the things we're working on moving forward to.
Questions, Member Kehoe?
Yeah, so I was pleased to look at the results on the work order submissions, that the schools that we, in general, the ones that we're seeing low performance at, we're actually seeing more requests with.
Yeah.
So that means that people are actually using the systems to give you the feedback and the data necessary to actually improve the process. And hopefully, you're able to get good insight from that and be able to make some adjustments in those schools.
Yeah. And just as a thing, I want to make sure that teachers who may be watching or listening understand, it's not even that we expect them to kind of report, hey, you know, like they're our inspectors. It's one piece of data point that connects with others to tell us a story.
Right, right. If you didn't see the request there, then it'd be, why are we not having people saying that there's problems? And yet, your own internal measurements that you do, the random surveys that you do, show that there's problems.
Correct.
So the fact that there's a correlation there means that we've got more accuracy in the data and that there is really a problem, and that gives, hopefully, gives you the insights to be able to address those issues.
It does. And we can zero those in right into a hallway, a pod of classrooms. Helps us to know who that custodian assigned to that area is, what do they need to be retrained on. It's very, very helpful.
Okay. So the other question I had for you is that when you look at the, I understand the struggles in terms of the duplication, but I would rather have that problem than no reporting.
I agree.
So I don't know if the Google Docs just gives people visibility to issues that have already been reported, and that's why they won't report it again? Or whether it's somehow going to discourage them from reporting? Or what's, what you're talking about there?
One of the biggest things that we envision it'll do is allow us to have more of an exchange of communication. School Dude is very one-sided in a way, in that it's like, here's my issue, but there's not a great way to go, here's what we've done about it, or here's a question we have about that. So the Google Doc does allow us to exchange information a little readily.
Well, I'm really excited to see the collaboration that's happening between the, the, the union leadership and specifically the people to make this happen, because this is, they're the ones that see this problem, and they're the ones that, quite frankly, are the ones that are most vocal about the problems that they see, because they see it in their workplace every single day.
Correct.
And they want this to be fixed. And if we can make it easier for them to report the issues, then hopefully, that'll be easier for your team to be able to address those issues.
Yep, yep.
It's more of a comment. I think you guys are doing a great job. If you look at the numbers, they're improving from the last time. So I know it's a hard job cleaning up after people, but I think you guys are doing a great job.
And the thing that I like towards that end is I saw the improvement over year over year. So it's one thing to see improvement from spring when you're just coming off of a nasty winter and really heavy use of the schools, but you're seeing, we're seeing generally improvement year over year, at least in the categories that are the same. So that's, that's good.
Member Berninski?
So what stuck out to me was vents and lights. And I guess what I would like to know is, how are you addressing that issue? Because it seems to be over and over in different areas.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things I've worked on, so as I've, because I sort of manually put the data in myself, because that helps me to know what's going on. And I notice a lot, for example, in almost every category where there is a light or vent category, it's usually worth out of, it's usually worth five points, and it's almost always a four out of five. So I'm trying to understand from our team, like, what are you seeing that triggers that to be an issue? And then what are we doing to teach the folks how to address it? So the good news is, is there's a lot of easy fixes, whether it's, one of the main things that I am aware of is that typically, we would vacuum with a vac pack, so like the vacuum that's on your back, which is easy to then just lift up and suck out the vent. We've moved more towards uprights. We actually have a program in place where we issue certain people an upright, and if they take care of it, then they can keep it. And upright cleaning, the bagless upright HEPA-filtered vacuums are much more effective in the classroom settings and in mats and stuff like that, which is one of the things that's helping. However, they, you know, now they have to remember to pull that attachment out and still suck up the lights. So we're, we're working with them on that.
Okay, so then that led me to looking that we're still seeing issues with missed tasks. And that bothers me. And I'm trying to understand, is that from your checklist that things are being missed? Or is that requests that are being missed? Or if it's requests, would that be under requests on the graph?
Yeah, so, so things that we would classify as a request are basically anything that starts with, hey, could you do this or that? Or this thing's coming up, and I would like this. Or it could be that something is asked to be done out of cycle. So usually, we wash desks on Wednesdays. Hey, I had this happen. I know it's a Friday. Can you wash my desk? Whereas missed task is sort of like, for a lack of a better term, it's sort of a catch-all category. It's, if I listed out each individual item for them to check, Um, it's, it's, if I listed out um each individual item for them to check, it would be a large thing, so it's kind of like, here's the main carac- carac- categories, but anything else that gets uh that there's an issue with kind of gets cycled into this missed task piece. For me, the biggest thing I'm looking for in that is when there's actually, you know, teachers will say, hey, my room didn't get cleaned yesterday or today. And then they'll put it, usually if it doesn't get cleaned one day, they're good about, eh, it might have been a mistake. Couple of days, now they they put the School Dude in. So those are the things I'm monitoring for and watching, you know, where is that happening and why is that?
It seems like if a a whole room hasn't been cleaned, that should be more than a missed task though. I mean, to me, a missed task is you forgot to um vacuum the floor.
Mm-hmm.
Or something like that, instead of you forgot to do the whole room.
Right, right.
So, anyway, I'm I'm hoping that um that can be addressed and I will see a decrease in the future, I hope.
Uh, member Brooks, then member Kehoe.
Yeah, I'm look- looking at this uh um the list here of buildings of highest, highest rating and lowest rating. And I noticed that the um some of the lowest, lower, or the low-rated ones were older schools. Is that because of uh it just being old or the materials in the building?
We have a couple of issues that, you know, that he didn't touch on, it is, a lot of them are the older buildings. Um, a lot of the bathrooms with the grout, you know. It it's, it's the, the tile that was put in there forty, fifty years ago is really not, the porousness is completely gone, I mean, it's now it can soak up anything. So the smells, um, yes, that is, a lot of it is based off of the older buildings and the material that was put in in those buildings that we would shift to a different material. Hopefully.
Member Kehoe.
And so one of the things you mentioned is is like the um the the lights and vents, they end up being a score of five and, or I'm sorry, five points and that there's a score of four. Perhaps a better way to measure these things is to have a consistent score of a one to ten and then you just apply the factor on it in terms of what the points are worth. Because then you get more granularity in terms of what, the way you're measuring that.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than just giving them, if there's a, if there's only five points possible, then they can only do one to five, or if there's fifteen points possible, then they do the other uh process, because you might see some skewing in terms of what you've got.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas if you had just a score that was more uniform and then you apply your, your your factor to that afterwards.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, that's a good suggestion, I didn't think about that, just having that consistency. Um, I really like some of the improvements that have occurred over the last year and your plan for improvements. Particularly the rolling out of the quarterly training, so thank you for putting that in place. Uh, just to pick up on um what member Brooks said. Salem, beyond the floors and the bathroom, what is it that keeps coming back to Salem and West?
So it's a, a lot of it is the surface, the tiles, the grout.
Just the tiles issue?
So, at Salem especially, you have um what are those, traction gaps, the gaps?
Oh, yeah.
No, not the trays, oh, the gaps. Expansion joints, we have a ton of expansion joints all over the second and third floor. Um, it's almost impossible to clean those. The, you know, you take a machine, if you take a machine over it, everything gets stuck and then it gets tracked everywhere. Um, it's just the age of a lot of these buildings and also Salem. The biggest reason about Salem, Salem is our largest-use building. Um, that building never is quiet. It, you know, you have one of the pools, you have the um auditorium, you have the, it's the largest cafeteria. You have the radio station, I mean, that building is run I bet eighteen hours a day, five days a week, six days a week, sometimes even on Saturdays, you know. Um, so I think that's part of Salem's struggle that we have and having a consistent base, a consistent workers there. Um, West is one of the lowest, but actually, you know, I've talked to Clint a bunch and this year has actually been a pretty good year, he's been pretty happy overall. Um, but it's just, you know, the bathrooms, it it's, we're, the grout is not, the grout and the tile is a huge thing and the ventilation issues we have. Making sure that all of the um, the vents are working. Um, at the elementaries, you know, you have those single bathrooms in the little classrooms. And they're impossible to get like a machine in there to really get down and get it cleaned, so you're really stuck with just mopping and doing the best you can in that, air in those areas. Um, so yeah, that that's kind of gives you a synopsis, but really Salem, Salem never sleeps, that building is running all the time.
Does the staffing need to be addressed at Salem?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Possibly, we've, we've definitely talked about that, we've rolled out a couple of different plant, plans of shifting different ways of how we cleaned it. Um, we're still working together collaboratively to find a better reason, better, better rollout of that building. Um, yeah, so definitely, that is something we can look at.
Yes, member Lazarus.
Two things, one thing was the the pool deck. When was the pool deck last power washed down? Or does it get power washed?
In Salem, they were both done. We did, September probably.
Yeah, so it's like once a year?
Yeah.
Well, it regularly gets, so as much as we can access it, so there's um, the way the bleachers are set up in there are somewhat problematic. Um, that would be a a place to really look at a different way of doing it, they're not movable. Um, and so we're really reliant on how well we can sort of get enough pressure under there, we run the the main platform with a little scrubber.
Does that get like once a day or every week?
Once, well, we do it once a day.
Once a day?
On third shift, yeah.
Okay.
Um, the other issue you have with Salem is, some of it is that where the, the the mineral corrosion over time, years and years and years, have worn away some of the the corners of the tiles. Um, and and the coloring of the tiles, and so it looks
This, this
worn and faded.
The, the coloring of the tiles, no, because a parent was asking me about the pool deck.
Mm-hmm.
When was the last time it was power washed? And so it gets power washed at least once.
Gets part of, power washed at least quarterly, and then we run a machine on it.
Like every day it gets a machine.
Yeah.
And then the last one, there was a parent's concern about the women's restrooms up at the new high school, the Plymouth High School. She was concerned that the water's not working correctly, uh the sinks.
We had a couple, there was a couple um hand sinks that were not working, but
But they're fixed?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in in the day, though, because it's all automatic.
Right, no, I I understand batteries or whatever, no, I
We're pretty good on
I just want to answer, so when I see this person, I can say, hey, you're on it, it's working.
We're pretty good at trying to get to those with our plumbers and stuff.
No, I I know you guys are, I just wanted answers.
Yeah, understand.
No, thank you, very much, and I know it's a hard job, so thank you so much, you guys are doing a great job.
Oh, one more, I'm sorry, member Brooks.
Yeah, these, these problems that we're having, like we were just discussing, are they um, are they going to be addressed in like our ten-year plan?
So I know for a fact, um, sorry, I'm gonna steal some thunder maybe, but I know the um, we're at Bird and the other elementary that we're looking at bathrooms, fair? Sorry, there are two elementaries that are going to be addressed, Gallimore and Bird are going to be addressed, the bathrooms will be addressed. Um, in this summer coming up. Um, with materials, we're just starting to look at what we're, what materials we're going to be going in there. So yeah, these bathrooms are part of the long-term ten-year plan.
So that's not even, the the things you're doing this summer would not even be part of the bond, that's money that you're allocating and doing that, those projects outside of the bond.
Correct.
Needs to be repaired on that, just age?
Just age, the bathrooms are, they're small, the tiles. Yeah, it's quarry tile, that's pretty much all, but in, all the properties that you have to keep things out of it are gone. The grout is terrible, so all that stuff's going to be ripped out and a new surface will be put in.
All right, I'm wondering for the staff, um, since Monica's not here. Do we have a process in place for when parents are in the building and they see an issue, like is there a way for them to report something to School Dude or to a staff member so this gets put in?
So it's my understanding that secretaries in each building have all the power to put in a School Dude for anyone, so they would just report it to the main office.
But if the, like on a weekend, if they're, like for the bathroom issue at Plymouth?
They do a pretty good job of making sure that they find a um, a J R B S or a plant engineer that's there and kind of, and bring it, bring it to the attention, there's no true documentation of that. But they, they do a pretty good job of communicating that and so does the um director, the um instructors that are renting the place, renting the buildings and stuff, they do a pretty good job of letting everybody know. Whether it may be the next eve, you know, the next day, there may be an email sent and then we'll address it.
Okay, thank you.
So, so if I go to a play to see the next play, if I see something wrong at Salem, I can address it to
Find a staff member for the building.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, thank you. All right, next, up is teaching and learning, Beth, you could take us through the course information?
We have um a couple of new course proposals to bring to the board. Uh, the first is business foundations and technology. So this course proposal is a um, one of, it would be the entry course to the upcoming Business Academy. Uh, the foundation of the course is an entry-level course that prepares students to be successful throughout the Business Academy and would launch them into whatever type of pathway, whether it be marketing, finance, any of those um future offerings. A little bit about the course, the course would introduce students to an entry-level understanding of business organizations and structures. Management and leadership styles, marketing fundamentals, accounting and principle, and financial principles. Which Debbie would love, right? Production methods and human resource management and diversity. Business technologies would include the Google Platform, Microsoft Office products and the Adobe Suite, and they would be utilized throughout each unit of instruction. As well as the fact that soft skills such as communication, teamwork and adaptability would be embedded within the curriculum, so. That's business foundations and technologies. So I'll pause there for any questions you might have about that one and then we'll kind of continue on with the next one.
Well, we had a uh pretty nice discussion around this in SPA last week and I think everyone was pleased to see all of this put together for the Business Academy, knowing that these are really important skills for students, especially if they're going into the business field. Any other comments? Yes.
Beth, um, the intention is that this would start next year, correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought. So will you be able to, and I know there's several new classes. Um, but will you be able to get those put into the program of studies in time for registration?
Yep, it will go in the course catalog in time and be available for registration for the fall, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for asking the question, okay.
Okay.
Okay, the second course, oh, I'm sorry, was it another question? Okay, second course proposal is actually a revision of a current course, but because of the way it's needed to be revised, it becomes almost a new course, so we thought it would be best to bring it as a new course versus a revision of an old course. Which will make sense, I think, in a minute. Um, the course is cybersecurity. Uh, it currently runs as a one-hour, one-block cor- it's a one-hour course. But because of several things about this course, including the change in Perkins funding, the C T E funding. Uh, the, the proposal is to um kind of change the structure of the course to become a two-hour, a two-block course. A couple of reasons for this. One is during class time, the hands-on labs that require students to do work in hardware, I T, hardware and software concepts, networking, ethical hacking and forensics. Allow kids to work on computer network vulnerabilities, attack forums, um countermeasures and defense systems. To do this, it takes a good amount of setup for our virtual systems. Um, the teachers right now utilize a number of virtual machines, it takes about thirty minutes of of time. Uh, about twenty minutes for setup and teardown, so right now currently kids get about thirty minutes to actually work in the, in the, the, kind of on their labs. But they usually take around ninety minutes or so to complete, so that's one issue. The second issue is really that the C T E funding has changed this year. And it's not feasible to teach all segments of this course in a one-hour block over one year. So, doing so, there'd be really two options, one is to teach it in a one-hour block for two years or to include it in a two-hour block for one year. Now, looking at our eleventh and twelfth graders in our career, in our computer science pathway, it really would um, be nearly impossible for them to do it over two years because of their their limited options in including and working through that pathway. So it's really, it's a twofold reason for bringing it, but I just kind of want to pause and and see if you have any questions about cybersecurity and the revisions, so.
Yes, member Kehoe.
Yep.
Go ahead.
So a couple of questions.
Yep.
One is on the two-hour blocks, we have so many requirements for students right now. Are they going to be able to make time in their schedules to fit a two-hour block uh class in there and does this count as something else?
Yep, it's, it's, it actually, it's two electives, but um I talked with the C T E folks because uh the, the, almost all of the students that take this course are in our computer science class, our, our computer science pathway. And it does allow them to get their other courses and stuff. Um, I, I, we talked with them about, you know, options and stuff and the response was most students, this is their major option anyway, so it helps fulfill their requirement for the computer science pathway, they also get a number of industry certifications as they're doing this course, so. Yes, it's a, it's a give and take because it does reduce some options of other um electives that a student could take, but most, most of the, all of the students, the vast majority of students that are taking this, this is their, this is their passion and this is what they want to certify in, so.
This doesn't count as a math or any of the core um requirements that people have to take?
It, I do not believe so at this time, so. And it, it will certainly be look, something we'll look at as we continue to look at and align our options and and work on those, those alignment pieces, I know exactly where you're going with this, so. As we continue to look at the state legislation and how we can use some flexibility to, you know, count things both ways.
They just have so many things that they have to take.
Yep, I agree.
This makes it really tough.
Yep, so.
Member Berninski.
So I'm piggybacking on Patrick, and you know I expressed some concern about the two-hour block at SPA. What I'm wondering is, um, if we approve this, can we get um data or information about how well the class is going, how
Yes.
how many students are taking it, you know, at the end of next year to reevaluate it?
Absolutely, I, I, yes, I promise you that we will do that, we will bring back data on all of these.
Okay, I just, I, because I am concerned too about
Absolutely.
about the two-hour block.
Yep, and I appreciate the board's um, and, you know, continuing concern and insurance that our students have as many options as possible to be successful and to to, you know, meet all of our students' needs, so thank you, yeah.
Member Brooks.
Yeah, is, is this a um class in a sequence that it has to be, there has to be another class before this one or where in the um, the grades that they have to take?
It's generally taken by eleventh graders and some, you know, um currently it's taken by the eleventh or twelfth graders, it would most likely fall in the eleventh grade sequence, it could be uh with, with it, doing a two-hour block, it actually open up for either of those grade levels a little bit more flexibly because if it were in a a one-hour block still and to get funding, because funding for C T E is based on completions. Um, then it would actually lock in um two out, two classes all the way through and it'd be a lot more difficult for students to complete that way, so.
And the last question is, is um thirty minutes for setup and teardown is just too long.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that there's a lot of automation that can be done on that process, I don't know whether you've spoken to Mark Salzer, I don't know if the work that they're doing and setting up is tearing down is important for them as part of the learning process.
Mm-hmm.
If it's part of the learning process, I'm great, I'm all for it. However, if it's just
Right.
they're trying to start up the V M and trying to shut it down.
Mm-hmm.
It's way, way too long, you can fix those problems.
Yeah, Mark was, Mark was with us at at SPA and is contin- you know, continually in this conversation with us, so, yep.
Are there any other classes in that uh particular area that are two-hour blocks? Or is this going to be the only one?
There aren't any new ones coming at this point for um revision or modification in that, I can't speak right now to whether there are other two-hour blocks in there. I'm, I'm, I can bring that back and and answer that question now, there aren't any other proposed revisions to add, any additional ones at this time.
Okay, um, I just want to quick recall the other certifications that are part of this course, can you just briefly mention those?
Um.
Or do you, I'm not sure if you have that information.
I have it for a different course and I think that might be the one you're thinking of, A P Computer Sciences, as we get to that one, I think that might be the one you're
Okay.
thinking a little bit more about, which we'll talk about when we get to that one.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, also for the board's readings tonight are four proposed course changes. Um, I'll take each of them one at a time, the first one would be to consider changing Auto Mechanics one course name to Automotive Technology. There are a couple of reasons for this course change request, name change request. It's a pre-vocational course that's open to students interested in pursuing auto mechanics as a potential career choice. The students are instructed in the proper use of automotive tools and equipment, equipment, and they're also instructed on all of the major systems of an automobile. The, the request comes because of two things. Automotive Mechanics one is a prerequisite course for a course right now called Advanced Automotive Technology. When the courses were created, the names of the courses did not align, which has led to some confusion. So for two reasons, one, to provide better clarity for students and parents regarding our pacing and sequence and alignment. As well as to more closely align with what industry calls and industry language uses for this terminology, we'd like to change the course name to Automotive Technology. So I'll pause for any questions you might have.
This makes more sense in context with the next one that you're doing.
Yep, so, and I can just, if you want, I can knock the next two out together and then we can kind of ask any questions about the next two. So the next one is called, um, the, the, the course name change would change from Auto Service and Maintenance. So the next one is called, um, the, the, the course name change would change from auto service and maintenance to automotive maintenance and ownership. So, the topics that are covered in this course are basic vehicle maintenance, minor vehicle repair, introduction to how the eight car systems work, safe work habits, how to purchase, insure and afford a car, automotive history and basic tools, a course we probably all would've loved when we were younger. Students taking this course acquire the skills necessary to perform basic vehicle maintenance. So, the course does not focus on preparing students to work in the auto service industry, rather having a knowledge for their own car ownership. Therefore, our new course proposed name is automotive maintenance and ownership. And then the third of the automotive, uh, requests would be to consider renaming collision repair to auto body repair and restoration. So, the collision repair course has been in place for many years, but over time, the course has been kind of revised to align with the state-approved C T E programming, as well as an automo, automation service excellence-approved program. The course is also foundational training for post-secondary auto body programs. As the C T E curriculum has changed, the focus of the course has expanded well beyond collision work. It now includes full auto body work and restoration of vehicles such as painting, metal finishing, sheet metal fabrication, welding, and disassembling and reassembling of repaired and restored vehicles. Students use a wide array of bodywork tools, air tools, hand tools, medical, metal fabrication equipment, oxy-acetylene torches and welders. And this course follows a project-based format with students spending the majority of their time working directly on our vehicles. Due to the changes in the course curriculum, students learn and experience far more than collision repair. Because of this, we'd like to change the course name to auto body repair and restoration. This name also better aligns to the coursework, industry language, and that all post-secondary programming in this area. So I'll pause for any questions you have on those, and then we'll do the final of the requested course changes.
They, they make sense to me, especially the first two because they're, they could be misleading. Um, and I think with the changes, you make it very clear which ones are career path and which ones are more personal.
Okay, yeah, agreed, okay, okay. The, the final course name request change is computer science principles, changing the course name to A P Computer Science Principles. And an addendum to the board pack is in front of you, which is the college board's approval for this A P course, advanced placement course. So, the high school computer science principles course introduces students to the foundational concepts of computer science and challenges them to explore how computing and technology impact the world. With a unique focus on creative problem-solving and real-world applications, this course helps students develop programming expertise and explore the workings of the internet. Projects and problems include app development, visualization of data, cybersecurity and simulation. Work with Python, Scratch, P H P, MySQL, Java chip, or JavaScript, Nand, Norgate's App Inventor and H T M L five are included. When we examined the computer science principles course curriculum, we found that the course aligned to the college board's A P Computer Science Expectations. So, applied for A P certification and received it shortly after SPA. So, the request would be to change the, the course to A P Computer Science Principles to more accurately reflect the curriculum taught in the course, and also to allow our students to participate in the A P exam. So I'll pause for any questions.
Is there a non-A P Computer Science Principles, or is there, I mean, I just, I'm trying to understand whether people might be scared off of the A P, uh, concept?
The, the current course name is computer science principles, so one of the things I think that would be important is our messaging in the course, that, that it is for, you know, it's not, uh, only an A P course, but it, it, uh, suits the needs of A P and that, you know, we are supporting all students to ensure success of all students, so, yeah.
We're not actually changing the curriculum or the, anything that's happening. We're taking our existing course.
That's correct.
And it's been able to meet the expectations of A P, which is fantastic. It's just, I just don't wanna, oftentimes, A P has a connotation that it's gonna be really hard.
I recognize that, yep.
And so we just have to be cautious about how we message on this.
Yep, and we will be very, very intentional in how we message the course. Um, and obviously, so Heather and the C T E folks will, have worked very hard to make sure that it's inclusive of all students, so.
So, again, we talked exactly about this in SPA. But I also, um, am thinking, this is, um, part of this, uh, computer science STEM pathway, right?
That's correct, yep.
So, families that, whose students, um, are on that pathway, we're expecting that their student would be taking a class that didn't have A P in the title. So we have to be really careful about that because not only, um, is it a class name change, but it's their pathway has sort of, in a way, changed just because of the name change.
Okay, and I appreciate that, so, thank you for that. And we will make sure, if approved, that we're very, very intentional about messaging this and messaging it appropriately, so, go ahead.
Do we have precedent for other classes that are the same class it's taught for both A P and non-A P students? Or non-A P tests? I mean, obviously, the A P test is an optional thing.
Yes, it is, absolutely, yep.
So that's great, but how do we, do we have other classes like this where, where we do this? Cause like when I think of the other things like U S history or government, there's always government or A P, U S, A P government.
And that's why, you know, because it's a pathway that, you know, they had their four years set out for them that they were gonna take certain classes, and now we're kind of making a change partway through.
Yep.
We're not really, we're just changing the name, but it's actually the same curriculum, so.
It is, but it's the expectations.
Right.
And it may, yeah, and it may, and it will feel like a change, so, um, I do, I will investigate that and bring the answer to that back, and I'll also talk with the team about, um, that. If we have multiple sections, maybe what that might look like.
Or, or, or is it possible, I mean, I know this is kind of awkward, but is it possible to make the name of the course, um, computer science principles and A P computer science principles? And say it's the same thing, and that way people know that it's the same class and they can take A P credit for it or not? I know it's an awkward naming, but.
Actually, that's a really good idea, that you can say A P computer science principles in parentheses, formerly known as your computer science principles.
Or, or just say both, I mean, cause it's really the same class.
Of course, yep.
You're not changing the class.
Correct, correct.
You're just giving them the option to be able to take the A P test, which is fantastic.
Yep, well, they had the option to take the test before. You don't have to take the class.
You're right, but, but the curriculum aligns to the A P test. So it's actually, it gives people.
It gives them an honor point, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so, I guess towards that, that, that end is, if people are taking this class now, um, or next year, um, that are taking this class, and they chose not to take the A P class, they actually get that honor point automatically.
Cause of the A P title.
Cause of the A P title.
And they're sequencing, let me look.
Cause I think that, I mean, that's actually, that's.
A P counts.
A P counts for five points, right?
Yeah.
So this is actually incredibly advantageous to all the students. You're taking the same class you got before, but you get a higher G P A from it for whatever grade you get.
And I think that's what they noticed as they were investigating, and they said, why not just call it A P? Because we're already doing the work. So, you know, I applaud you for, the, the team for thinking, um, into that. Uh, but to bring up what Patrick said, in terms of a general computer science course, I wonder if there's an opportunity to have something like that at the middle school or early, like ninth, tenth grade, to expose kids to something like this? Because I think waiting until your senior year or eleventh grade year to talk about computer science, cybersecurity, by that point, some kids are already turned off. But if you can expose them to elements of computer science, I know, I think, at the statewide level, we've talked about middle school by being the ideal place to bring in some of those fundamentals of computer science. So kids see what it's about and get excited, so by the time they get to high school, they have some understanding and appreciation for that.
Room and schedule.
Pardon me?
There's no room in the schedule.
Yeah, and one of the challenges too is we have a difficult fi, time finding folks to teach it at the high school level. That's one of the things we're talking about in collaboration with, um, Schoolcraft and Wayne as well because it's a really difficult, um, certification to hire folks in.
Well, the state isn't offering computer science certification anymore, so, I mean, that's, but again.
It's funny, cause this, this is like, this is thirty years ago.
I know.
Same, same, same problem. Everybody took computer science, and then nobody wanted to take computer science anymore, so, and now we're back again.
But this class, this, the, the class in it has, you work with hardware and all the other stuff in there. And back when I went, and computer science was just strictly programming and coding. And, um, I was kinda thinking when you were talking about people getting the extra points and that, but there may be somebody that wants the A P and they're on the A P, um, road, and they're looking at this class and then they're reading the description. It's like, wait a minute, this used to be that one, maybe I'm not getting the A P version of this. So, and maybe to a disadvantage to have the A, A P label on there for certain people who get, you know, think, oh, I'm not getting the right class.
No, cause the, the description is exactly the same. The only thing that's changed is the two letters.
But they, but they would look at it saying, well, this used to be just a computer science.
But I think that's part of the messaging that they have to make sure.
Yeah, right, it has to, the messaging has to be in there.
I think you could do the messaging for all the people that are in the current program.
Yep.
And then you need to have the conversations with people, is this is the same class that we did before.
Future students, yeah, absolutely.
But I still wanna make sure that we don't lose the idea of having some introduction to computer science fundamentals, whether it's another elective you offer at the middle school, or even in fifth grade, you start to embed coding into some of the work.
That would be awesome.
Right? Um, and even design thinking, and there's so much cybersecurity. When you look at the computer science standards for K twelve, there are a lot of areas for those integration to be part of the regular classroom to make it more enriching. But again, I say that because we don't wanna wait for our kids to lose that interest, and by the time they get to eleventh, twelfth grade, they're like, ah, that's not for me, so, okay.
And we're doing some of that already, I think, with some of the robotics programs that we have.
But it's limited to robotics.
Right, but, yeah.
And computer science standards are really saying these are available to all, to, to make sure that we expose kids.
And when you look at the MyTex, um, for example, they are cross-curricular and embedded in all content areas. So, as we talk, as a teaching and learning team, we're, we're having those conversations about that, as well as Stanford and I D O's work around design thinking and, and where those can incorporate into the curriculum, so.
Alright, thank you for that. Any other questions? Alright, we are at letter G, um, action items discussion. I just wanted to let everyone know, we're still working with Len to get a date for the high-impact board governance work that started in the fall, um, or August, I believe. Um, due to a lot of schedule changes, that is to be determined, so just wanted to let you know Monica's been in discussion with Len. We're still working on a meeting date.
Is that the one for the twenty-first, or is that something else?
No, that's something else. So, the, January twenty-first is going through our M A S B self-assessment with Dr. Rod Green.
So that's locked in, it's just the location, isn't it?
Right.
I have a question about that one. Do, do we know when the, um, Platten Moran, um, School Law and Finance workshop is?
That's on a Saturday, I believe?
January twenty-fifth, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up, that's a great one, I encourage.
Yep, January twenty-fifth at the Vista Center.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie.
At where?
Vista Tech.
Yep, I encourage, um, all board members to attend. Uh, Member Berninski, uh, Member McCoyn and I went last year, and it was amazing.
I've been like three times. It's different every year, it's good.
Okay, uh, now moving on to board follow-up questions, so let's quickly go through those. Looking at student growth data from Julie Woodhams, um, that was sent in board notes, so everyone should've received that. Uh, provide dates, locations for informational campaign stops for BON twenty-twenty, that was also included in board notes. And the next one is, next outstanding item is possible questions for board members regarding state assessment results. Um, so, a couple of the board members did submit questions to Superintendent Merritt, and those questions were forwarded to the team. Um, they're working on those, and I guess, I think that'll be part of the January discussion, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, the next outstanding item is the follow-up of nine students that would have been subject to retention under the third grade. Um, last time when we talked about the third grade reading legislation, there were some questions that were asked about looking at what would happen to those students, and there were some questions about C P and how C P would handle the students that did not take the M step.
We won't know about this until when?
They're still working on that.
Correct?
Yep, so we're, yep, as, we're compi, we're looking at the data as we're, right now. So as soon as we can get it to you, we will, so.
But do you have that data now, or do we have to wait till spring of next year on that?
We'll be able to look at their growth rate, eh, eh, as we do our assessments now. But if you wanna look at the state assessments, yes, you would wait, but we can do some of our interim ones and kinda share with you how they're doing.
Fantastic.
Along the way, so.
And the C P, um, information is whenever you guys can get a, you know, an answer from them.
Yep, correct.
And the last one, oh, I think that was the last one, the C P, okay. And that's outstanding.
Yep.
Okay, uh, follow-up board questions from this meeting. So, can you remind me, um, did you write down the questions that we had? I know there was a question from Member Kehoe, and I don't know if you want this to be included in board notes, for G S R B to change the point scale to ten?
It was a suggestion. I don't wanna micromanage how they're doing it. If they want to do it the way they're doing it, that's fine, it was just a suggestion.
Okay. Uh, Member Berninski, did you have a follow-up question to add?
Just long-term down the road, reevaluating, um, the two-hour block of cybersecurity.
Okay, um, so we would, I wonder if we wanna put that in board notes? Cause then we have to read that every time, saying that's an outstanding issue.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure we keep a track of it.
Right. Did you get that? Okay, thank you. Um, any other outstanding questions from this time? Okay, excellent. Well, before we adjourn, I just wanna make sure that everyone has a really wonderful, restful, safe holiday winter break. Get the much-needed dessert, break and rest that you all need. And I just wanna say thank you for all that you do. I mean, this is a huge district, um, there's a lot going on, and I just wanna thank everyone at this table. I wanna thank the, the community, the kids, the parents, the teachers, and, um, just enjoy your break. Alright, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second?
Okay, motion was made by Member Brooks, seconded by Member Kehoe. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries six zero, thank you. We're adjourned at eight forty-seven.
Five zero.